Good evening and welcome to the second Evergreen Town Hall. My name is Kyle Wilson and I will be one of two hosts that you have for this evening's event. I am an 11-year resident here at Evergreen, came out from out west. And I can say that although, yes, the beautiful mountains drew me out here, yes, being able to see elk and deer drew me out here, but absolutely, the number one thing that brought me out here was the people. The people in our town. I'm sorry, what? Oh, not okay. I don't mind a little heckling, we can work with that. Presently, I am the president of the Boogie Benefits Board, which is a little challenging to say fast, but we are an all-volunteer nonprofit that provides music-based charitable events where our beneficiaries are other nonprofits and charities here. So you may have seen signs for the Boogie Bag, the Sprayed Boogie, or Boogie at the Ranch. That is the organization that I proudly work with. And we help support people like Resilience 1220, Echo, Inspire, Mountain Area Resources, Outline Rescue Team, and many others. So as I said, people in the community here mean a lot to me. And before we begin tonight's agenda, I'd like to read to you a quote that I found that I think is very appropriate for this evening. It's from American writer Margaret Weet. "There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." I found this quote to be appropriate not only for tonight's Town Hall, but also for the need for future Town Halls beyond today, where our community can come together to learn, have open dialogue, and continue to thrive. I'm excited to get the evening started by introducing Patricia Bales, a 2024 graduate of the Leadership Evergreen program. Have a round of applause, please.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the second annual Evergreen Town Hall, which was created and founded by community members. Today, we are excited to present announcements and information about upcoming events, share a brief presentation about our team that created these Town Halls, and how they came to be, and shift over to our primary topic, which will lead to presentations and a question and answer on our three special districts: Evergreen Fire Rescue, Evergreen Water, and Evergreen Park and Rec. Before we get started, though, we want to take a moment to reflect the strength of our community, and in particular, our students, faculty, and staff in our schools. The face of the horrible shooting that took place last month, the ways that our community has responded to support EHS and the families and friends impacted was a beautiful thing to see. From shops offering free food and drink, trauma support, massages, the list goes on and on. Thank you to each and everyone that has stepped up to support our most impacted community members through this time of healing. We'd like to take a moment of silence at this time. It is clear that leaders are all around us, but this reminds us to remind you all of how Tom Paul started and to give a shout-out to the nonprofit that pushed our team to create the Town Hall. Leadership Evergreen is dedicated to educating and empowering individuals who want to make a difference in our mountain community through an engaging program to spend gaining insights into local government, special districts, and the organization that pulls gas and solves problems. Leadership Evergreen just closed their application site over the class of 2026, and we are so excited to see what this next class accomplishes together, just like our class did. So I'm now going to pass this on to me, Ronnie.
All right, hello, everybody. My name is Vee Staimis.
And I'm Ronnie Clark.
And we're here presenting to you all on behalf of our class of Leadership Evergreen of 2024, to give a little more background information on why we decided to put on two Town Halls this year. Our class deeply benefited from accessing leaders in our communities, learning critical details about Evergreen's history, and understanding how our community operates. So much so that we decided to host Town Halls as our class project to extend some of its benefits to our community, while offering central gathering place for us to all be together in. Our vision was to create, engage, and empower community where transparent and inclusive dialogue fosters collaboration and mutual respect, shaping a vibrant and united future for our Evergreen community. The mission of our class of organizing these Town Halls was to foster a connected community through conclusive, nonpartisan Town Hall meetings, providing forums for sharing information, addressing local issues, and discussing opportunities. While we may not have achieved these vision and mission just yet, we hope that these help envision the goals we set out originally in putting on these Town Halls.
So when you look at the screen here, I think it answers the most frequently asked question from the first Town Hall, which was, who put this on? Who's behind this? Who's running this? And whose idea was it to have the Town Hall? So if you look here at the screen, you can see that these are people from all walks of Evergreen life. We really kind of hit that whole Evergreen spectrum, from business owners to employees of corporations and employees of local districts that are here today. I think it was a great experience because we were all strangers when we started. None of us knew each other, none of us had a plan going into it. But being challenged by the program itself to have a class project and to make an impact in the community while we learn more about what and when the work rate in Jefferson County does and how it happens was a really great experience.
Briefly, wanted to give you a little bit of insider's good, loving story. So Town Halls came to be from us all joining Leadership Evergreen as strangers to this Town Hall being a class project we founded. As Ronnie mentioned, we all joined Leadership Evergreen for different reasons, but we all had pretty common horizons for joining. First was to understand how to be more involved in Evergreen. Second was to increase our depth of knowledge about how our uneincorporated community works. And the third was to connect resources, leaders, other businesses, and likewise stakeholders to be able to tackle issues of importance. Leadership Evergreen requires that each class belongs to a group of members of the class project. For example, the mural on the installed building you can see here was a Leadership Evergreen class project. We'll use that. We brainstormed the ideas and narrowed that down into a couple of discrete criteria that are ranked against such as budget, timeline, community interest, community need, to name a few. Finally, we landed on this as our class project that we could do in a single year following our career. As we started combining things, we ended up trying to build this forum that was an extension of all the opportunities that we felt and we recorded in our program and that we could then offer to the community. Oh, which leads us to the top four reasons for why we created the Town Hall.
Thank you, Vee. So that first major reason was really something to address the need that came up from not having a centralized form of government. So we wanted to see if we could have comprehensive information and expert voices, like we do today, sitting in front of you, in one place that were available to the people living in the Evergreen community. And through our research, we saw successful models that are really close to us, like the Conifer Town Hall. I don't know if anybody in here knows, Conifer has a Town Hall, but they do. It's well-attended and it's well-reviewed also. But then we saw some not-so-great examples of how the community can get together on Facebook and Nextdoor, where some of those samples can be maybe a little bit too anonymous and a little bit too behind the curtain. And so we know that inaccuracy can be addressed better in person in a forum like this. And we heard from leaders across all of Evergreen that central organizing entity, if there was such an entity, would really be a great asset for a community like ours in an unincorporated, marginalized environment.
The next main reason why we wanted to put on Town Halls is that we are really proud of the fact that we are unincorporated. We don't believe that we need a government, we believe that we operate incredibly well. That being said, the things that we can do incredibly well as a non-incorporated community is offer responsiveness to specific needs that our community has. Our community is unique and has services and organizations developed over time to fill gaps and meet those needs. And the Town Hall does just that, offering accurate information from experts, inclusive and free for all to attend, offering a place to meet people with similar interests and concerns, and access to leaders in the community with power to support or make changes that we want to see. Town Halls do so with extremely limited budget, no waste of resources, and without the bureaucracy, taxes, and bias that a government might have. Town Halls bring expert advice and content to inform the community of what's happening and how local leadership entities are serving our needs. They provide a central structure to organize people who want to get involved but do not know where to start working.
And so helping to connect our community, we have a lot. I don't know if anybody in here is familiar with how many nonprofits we have registered within Evergreen, but it's hundreds. And we have plenty of nonprofits that fill needs that are not met at other communities down the hill quite as easily. And then we have these wonderful special districts here that help us solve individual goals. But what Evergreen is lacking, and is usually filled by a city government or a city council or something of that sort, is an organization whose sole responsibility is to share the information directly from the source and connect those dots for you. So our exclusive mission in putting all this together was to be a neutral, non-bias, nonpartisan kind of organization that was going to present you just with the information and facts, which we knew that Evergreen might be lacking.
And our last reason for putting these on was to be responsive. Our Town Hall seeks to be responsive to the needs and interests of the community by offering ways for you to provide feedback and tell us what you're concerned about, what your interests are, what questions you have. We leverage that to get back to you by the topics for these meetings, such as being able to join the topic for the last Town Hall and for our topic of special districts today. We welcome more feedback as we continue. We want to present information you care about and that our community partners and stakeholders want to offer to you a solution and answers to your questions. This forum provides the space for that conversation to occur.
It's kind of easy to glaze over that phrase of putting on the Town Hall, but these are a list of what those responsibilities look like that the nine of us have had during this past year in trying to coordinate the resources and get together the information and gather which kind of topics we should be speaking about. So we put in a few hundred volunteer hours combined between us, and I think we did learn a lot about planning and hosting the event, marketing it, putting the signs together, all of that. If you see that there's none out there, if you're wondering who was out there actually doing it and you want to be a part of the Town Hall in the future and you think you might be good at some of this, we want to know your name and contact information so that you can help keep this coming to fruition.
So what's next? We have officially planned two Town Halls, which was the original goal of our class project. The next step for us is to be able to confirm that this is valuable to our community. So our ask of you is to give us feedback. We would love to hear whether or not this is something we can continue doing on Evergreen and what value it brings. And we have two options for that. We have the "Pay Back" section on our website at evergreentownhall.com. And we have index cards right on the welcome table outside that we would love to leave with non-spect, to let us know how we're doing, what we'd like to see changed, or if you even think that this idea is actually of value for our community. At this point, we're trying to figure out what sustainability path looks like going forward. And if this is valuable to the community, we want to keep it going. We have some ideas for why we think that happened. So far, it's been all volunteer hours and a long time. So we are hoping to confirm that it means something to everybody. Last but not least, we'll pass it off to our partners.
If these maybe are some seeds of thought that helped you think about future Town Halls and what they could have as a main topic and could represent speakers and information that you might want to be connected to, these are some of the things that we've come up with along with feedback that we've heard through our website, through the Evergreen Town Hall website. And you can put in their topics that you want to see in the future, but these are just a field up here.
I did want to give a big shout-out to our key community partners who honestly were the backbone of these events and allowed us to make them happen. We have so many volunteers, both for speakers, face often to us, both contributed to the cookie bar you see at the back, and we wouldn't have been able to help without them. So a big thank you, a round of applause for our partners for helping to make it happen.
I want to say thank you, Patricia, Ronnie, and Vee, for that wonderful presentation. And for me, the fact that we have programs like this and developing leadership within our community, that makes me feel good about the future. Before I go to our presenters, I'd like to just make a few quick announcements about events that are coming up. If you were here a little earlier, you might have seen some of these up on the screen behind me, but I'll just go through a couple of them. These can all also be found on the Everything Evergreen app, which has many of these events. And if you don't know how to find that app or download that app and get it on your phone, I am sure there are some leaders in this room who will help you out and get you on the right path. Some of these events are the Homecoming Game coming up on the 17th, the Halloween Walk on October 31st. We also have the Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day, the Holiday Walk on December 5th. And then also, and Alan, I think this is one of your favorites, the Polar Plunge. That's right, I always see your bits of thinking about them. We also have coming up in just about another week is the We Are Evergreen Fall Festival on October 19th at the Wildgame from 10 to 5. There is information on that out on the back table. It is a family fun event filled with country music, line dancing, and a special appearance by country artist, Ali Kaline. There's so many of these amazing events happening. We know we haven't mentioned all of them, so again, please make sure to go to that app, just plug into the community, and refer to Everything Evergreen to access all these different events. Without any further delay, let's move on to our primary topic and the first of our three presenters. Our first presenter is Mike Uigie, who is the Fire Chief for Evergreen Fire Protection District and has served in this role since 2012. He's also the Board of Directors for the Jefferson County Communication Center Authority, or JeffCom. Mike started his career in the fire services as a volunteer firefighter in Evergreen Fire Rescue back in 2001. A graduate of the University of Wisconsin Stoughton, Mike worked in the mechanical engineering field prior to entering the fire service. Here's a fun fact about Mike. He's named on seven patents. Mike engineered equipment for the robotics industry, mobile mining, and electronic testing. In his free time, Mike enjoys camping, backpacking, fishing, and sports. Let's please welcome up Mike Uigie with his presentation, Building for the Future.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? First, I want to start by thanking Leadership Evergreen. It is so important for a community like ours to be able to get together like this and for organizations to be able to speak to you face-to-face. I can text you, but I'd rather just sit here and talk to you. It means a lot, so thank you for putting on this event and for trying to find a way to keep it going. Maybe have a round of applause for all of you. Before I start, help me out, just raise your hand when I ask you a question. How many people have lived here more than 40 years? How many people over 30 years? Very good. Over 20? Over 10? Less than 10? A lot of hands. So as I go through this, I'm a big believer that you need to understand where you came from if you're going to talk about Evergreen and what the future's looking like. So bear with me just a little bit here. I'm going to walk down memory lane with you. This was on Main Street, across the street from what used to be called the Red Ram, which is now Little Bear. You look on the top of the Little Bear, there's a little sign up there that says Red Ram. This was donated property. This was the very first fire station. Evergreen Volunteer Fire Department had got it. They started in 1948 and built this station in the very early 50s. Station 1, which is down by the dam, was built in 1965. All the trucks are white because Denver had white trucks. And white was a lot more visible back then, you didn't have all the reflective materials. Yes. That's what we have down there now, there's seven bays. They're down in Boy. I don't think we'll go back to Boy. Station 2, over here at the building in the middle of the campus, was built in 1978. This again was a volunteer department, so all these stations were built really without very minimal office space, some training space, but mainly it was a garage to hold the apron. It's the volunteers responded for long to get the trucks. That station's been added on to twice. It was remodeled in 1986 when the Evergreen Ambulance Service, which was a separate volunteer organization, joined Evergreen Fire Rescue. We had to make sleeping quarters for them, so it was remodeled then. And then in 2005, this building was built, Station 2 was added on to, and our maintenance facility on the other side of the campus was built. Station 3, Elmhurst Hill by the groundabout, that was built in the mid-'90s. Station 4 was originally for the Evergreen Ambulance Service, the volunteer crew. It came with them when they joined Evergreen Fire, but it was built in '85, this is at the S-Turns down in '73. That's an ambulance-only station. And then Stations 5, 6, 7, and 8 were all built in 2002 with the same bond money that the voters approved that built this facility and the maintenance building and the addition next door. So every decade, we see a lot of growth happening. How do we plan for all of this stuff? A master plan is developed. In 2001, a master plan was done, and it kind of detailed out what the next 10 years were going to look like. And that included all of the stations, the improvement here and Stations 5, 6, 7, and 8, and all the apparatus that went into that, as well as much, much more. We just finished a new master plan in 2024. So we asked them during that to give us the top priorities for that master plan, kind of the beginnings of a more strategic plan. But this was our 10-year look. The very first thing they wanted us to do, they recognized, was we needed to improve apparatus availability, which meant we have to get trucks out the door faster. For many, many, approximately 77 years, the Evergreen Volunteer Fire Department did a great job serving this community, but we're a respond-from-home organization. They would get up at all hours of the night or leave work, run to the fire station, get in a fire truck, and take it to a call. The delay of that, just with our call volume and the complexity of this community right now, we needed to improve getting trucks out the door much faster. So that's the first priority they gave us. How did we resolve that? We hired our first six career firefighters. Four of these guys were volunteers here, and two of them came from Chicago. So we get some great experience from the two guys from Chicago, and we get some people who are very, very used to working in Evergreen with the four others. They are housed here at Station 2. We're still heavily a volunteer fire department. We're transitioning into a true combination department, which means we have both, we have career firefighters and medics, and we have volunteer firefighters and medics. We've had as many as 90 volunteers, I think, right now. We have about 75 all-hazard volunteer firefighters. We need those people out there still doing what they're doing. We're holding academies every year and we're recruiting heavily to try and keep them responding in their neighborhoods and helping us out. When we have a wildfire, it can take 30 firefighters just on an initial fire. But we have a structured fire, and it's out of the hydrant district. We need 24 firefighters to get all the trucks on the road. So having career guys at the station gets those initial trucks out the door very quick, but we need our volunteers, so we're continuing the program. So as I mentioned before, Station 2 was built initially as a volunteer garage for apparatus and then a training area for the volunteers. Now we have paid medics and we have paid firefighters live in there. We have to remodel that thing to make it into a modern firehouse, a firehouse that has sleeping quarters available to them and all the other amenities that they need to spend 48 hours in that firehouse. So this is a rendering of what that house, the firehouse, is going to look like. This project, we have the money for it. We're working on construction drawings right now, and it's planned to start in March or April. We're still going to have firefighters and medics running out of this station, but we're going to, the bays are going to stay up at the north side of this and stay up. It's just, the rest of it's going to be a remodel. This is what the first floor will look like. So on the right side of the screen, we have 10 bedrooms. We want, if our fighters, if volunteers are crewing with the paid guys, which if you have a true engine company, you want to have four firefighters, a minimum of three. So that's, you know, there's four bedrooms right there. We have three medics on shift, so we can get ambulances out the door. That's three more than seven, and eventually down the road, this is going to be a 25-year building at least. It could go as long as 50 years with what we're doing. So we can't see that far out into the future, but 25 years from now, we could have battalion chiefs, we could have others housed over there. It's got three offices. A big thing that got taken, that the fire service is taking into account is cancer, whereas firefighters are 30% more likely to get cancer because of what we do. It's all the toxins, all the plastics, everything, there's birds in the house these days. It's in our hair. When we're wearing that gear, it gets in our skin, and it's gotten very, very serious. So steps are taken with firehouses these days to create a decontamination zone. When you bring the truck back to the bay, you're already out of your gear. You got, unfortunately, we get hosed down on scene with our gear on, and then we take it off. We want to bag it, keep it isolated. When we get back to the station, we need to go through a corridor to get cleaned off before we go back into the living quarters because we don't want to bring all that nastiness back into the living quarters. So we have a decontamination corridor here that includes showers, washing machines for their gear, washing machines for their other clothes, and then they pass through some doors to allow them to get back into the living quarters. The second floor, we needed to expand the kitchen. We needed a bigger kitchen if we're going to have as many as 10 people there. That's a great, that's a great dining room table. So we needed to expand the kitchen and then have a dais, what it's called, where you have a big table and a meeting area, or a TV, or a training area. So that's what the upstairs is going to look like, and there's three offices up there as well. Priority number two of the master plan was consolidate Stations 1 and 4. That was our original plan back in 2018, when we started working on that. We bought what used to be Mountain Market. Most of you still remember it as Mountain Market. It was owned by the Andersons. So that's going to be the home of our new Station 1. We've got that on our radar. Once we get Station 2 well underway, we want to revisit the drawings and start looking at that. at that again. This station was good, this, a rendering of that was gonna look like this. We needed three floors there, um, that top floor's probably gonna get bigger now. And five bays. This is a great spot for protecting downtown Evergreen. You know where we are right by the dam right now? We're just moving down the road, so this station covers all of Upland Park, down seventy-three, up to the top of Bear Mountain and down to Kittredge, um, and, um... That kind of covers it. So same concept here, we, we got the bays there and then upstairs, we had eight bedrooms here, the house, firefighters and medics. We'll move the medics from Station Four into this one and possibly sell that or find another use for the Station Four. Uh, why concentrate on Stations One and Two? This goes, the shows are covey over the last five years, starting in twenty twenty-three. You can see a vast majority of our calls are in the Station One and Two area. That's where our population is, right? Uh, seventy-four percent of emergency incidents, it's, almost sixty-six percent of our population are covered by those two stations. So the man on those two stations, um, to get apparatus out the door quickly and upgrade them to the modern fire stations is, is our goal. Priority Three was a formal transition of, into a single organization. For seventy-seven years, or, well, the Evergreen Volunteer Fire Department existed first. Evergreen Fire Rescue was formed, uh, with the Evergreen Fire Protection District and they've stayed kind of two different entities for seventy-seven years. The EBFD, the Evergreen Volunteer Fire Department, was a five oh-one C four. Evergreen Fire Rescue was a Title Thirty-two special district, so, um, we, it was time to transition into one Evergreen Fire Rescue. Uh, we say, "One team, one fire department, one mission." And it was, it's time, so, uh, that is being wrapped up right now. There's an Evergreen Fire Department Foundation that's been formed in its place, that's a five oh-one C three, and that'll be a fundraising entity now, mainly for Evergreen Fire Rescue as a whole, but for other things around the community. And that's actually got a board in there, or, or they're waving at me and I gotta move out. Uh, we, we, we then developed a strategic plan we had. Um, that's a three-year look at, and more detail, but we really need to look at. Station Two and Station One and Four being combined, we're a big part of that. Uh, let me pass this. Now, a big thing we've adopted within Evergreen Fire Rescue is community risk reduction. For years, we've been doing fire prevention. Uh, we go out, we inspect commercial buildings, new builds, we help with that. Uh, we, we have to, uh, we started looking at it and saying, "Oh, aren't we doing this?" And other things. ECU is what's developed. We're helping people age in their homes by, um, sending paramedics out to visit them, help them with their meds, help them with their bandages. After they get a leash from the hospital, the doctors notify us and we go and visit them to see how we can help them. Um, very successful program, it's growing. We built a pretty substantial wildland division. Wildlands are number one threat in this district, so we started growing this. We have seventeen people, believe it or not, that we built a wildland division. Ten of those are seasonals we hire and they're out doing mitigation work. Uh, the other half, we, the other piece we have is our education side. So Jess Moore and her group are out doing home assessments. They're, um, standing up here a lot, walking to the community and teaching about wildfire preparedness and what do you do when that actually, when the fire actually happens. I'll wrap up with that. There's some flyers back there for Lookout Alert. If you're not signed up for Lookout Alert, please do. It's incredibly important and you get notified of emergencies when they happen.
Thank you, Mike, that's fantastic. I love seeing all the old pictures. Our next presenter is Corey Van Veen. And this guy's got such a, like, great smile, lights up a room. Colorado native, voted on the front range, here at a double degree in business administration and outdoor leadership from Western State College. Corey's been working in parks and rec for nineteen years, having started as a lifeguard at Apex Parks and Recreation. He was active in corporate leadership and in April of twenty-two, Corey started his next chapter as the Executive Director with EBRD. Isn't that great? Yeah, I brought the applause right there. Corey has been married for thirteen years, has two children, six and nine years old. With his presentation for us is happiness at, I'm sorry, happenings, happenings. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I know, I tried. Happenings at EBRD. Let's hear it for Corey.
Tad that you have. Just way better. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Again, my name's Corey Van Veen. Uh, can you guys hear me in the back? Close enough? Perfect, thank you. I am the Executive Director of corporate recreation. I'm so humbled to be tonight. I love being able to spread our information of what's going on in our Parks Recreation District here. We're so lucky and so humble, uh, to be in this amazing Evergreen place we live. A little bit about Evergreen, uh, we are a special district like your others that are here today. We are pretty large, we're about twenty-three thousand people in our district, not as big as the fire district, uh, but we do serve the, the Evergreen community in many different, different ways, from parks to recreations to facilities, many of which you guys have probably been involved in. Um, again, we are here to elevate your life and our staff and our board do an amazing job of that every single day. Uh, our board is actually here, um, so we have a five-person board of directors. Can you guys please raise your hand? So I would just encourage, they are here truly for questions and to, to inform you guys of what they're doing right now in the community, so please, after this or even on a, uh, walking date or a lunch date, please get with them, they have great information, please, please do. Um, some other things too, our website, Evergreen Recreation, is a ton of information, so I'm gonna breeze through this lot fast and lighted, but a lot of our stuff is on evergreenrecreation.com. We also have a newsletter that goes out twice a month, um, so please sign up for that. That's a great source of information, everything we're doing, from projects to programs to activities in the park, please, please do sign up for that. We also have social media, um, every social media avenue as well. Please, that's where a lot of our information goes down. We also have our online board meetings, uh, they're once a month, they're hybrid, so please, if you wanna hear about what's going on, again, decisions, projects, uh, whatever's going on in the district, that's a great way to attend. Public comment, please share questions, ask to our board, what are we doing, how are we doing? Um, another great avenue. So again, we're, uh, we're a special district, this is our boundary, uh, many, many parks and we breeze through with playgrounds, fields, sport fields, turf fields, facilities, uh, Evergreen lake house, we operate weddings, activities and everything from, uh, large events to small events, supporting nonprofits with many of their events as well. We have about three hundred and seventy-five staff, so very big, with a lot of fitness instructors, but we also have about forty full-time staff right now. Everything from our admins teams to our lake house team to our parks team. We could do this without the community, truly. We are all connected even as special districts, but we work with a lot of organizations, um, to do what we do. So these are just a few of them and we work with a ton more, all those nonprofits that we're talking about. We get to work with many of them in many different ways. So the bulk of what I'm gonna talk about is our strategic plan. About two years ago, we underwent a large strategic plan and planned out many different avenues of the community program. Surveys to meet with kids in their classrooms, to meet with organizations from Juana's to Rotary's to other special districts. We, we went out for, uh, hundreds of meetings, hundreds of hours to gather that feedback of, how do we start to move forward as a district? What are the priorities, what are the needs, what are the wants? We're really shaped into this adaptive strategic plan over the next five years of what the priorities are. And, and the three big categories will take something away today. We are here to, to take care of what we have. We have a lot of infrastructure that's, that's aged. We have an obligation to have that quality as high as we can every time you set up a park, every time you set up a building. And so we always wanna take care of what we have. Next category is rebuild recreation. We wanna start to rebuild facilities, rebuild ports, rebuild our programming. And then the next one is start to expand our facility, start to expand our program. We have literally yoga, uh, goat yoga happening on Saturdays. You know, so we were able to pivot and my new program, but that's a part of the strategic plan. In addition, once that strategic plan got adopted, we really dove into and with overwhelming the support of the community, seventy-three percent in favor, uh, voted in favor of extending the bond. And so that bond is now giving us the ability, this bond extension, is giving us the ability to actually start doing a lot of these, take care of what we have, rebuild and expand facilities and services. And so recently, we've, we've done a couple of different variations, but our board of directors has, has adopted a master plan. A big, bold crown jewel of, of our community is here at the forty-two acre Buchanan Park. There's everything in there right now, but we wanted to see where we're gonna go with this. What are the amenities we're gonna have all around the community? We listen, we wanted to listen in order to implement. And so this, this behind me is, is our adopted master plan. You can see a lot going on here. I encourage you, spend a lot of time on our website to look through it, but we have all new trails, we have new facilities, we have new amenities, we have gathering spaces, we have water features, we have, uh, improvements to the asphalt trails, we have, uh, improvements in some of the passive spaces, we have game areas, so a lot going on in this park over the next four or five years through this bond extension money. So I'm gonna highlight a couple of the big ones. Lots of new trails, lots of new connections, um, safe trails, ADA trails, lots of new gathering spaces. We want people to come here. This park, the Cannon Park, sees over two hundred and fifty thousand people a year. And so we wanted to have the best experience for whatever people are coming into that park, community, the youth, the trails, the walkers, the neighbors, the dogs, everything under the sun. And so this park are these key elements that are in equipment over the next four or five years, gathering spaces, disease boats, you can have birthday parties, have a barbecue, but also water feature, interaction with that water, ponds are amazing, but also being able to play in some of those water features as well. Big one, take care of what we have, number one priority. Board has given us the, we have a swimming pool that is over fifty years old at Wolf. It is, every day, I'm having a photo, I don't get that call, oh my God, boom, boom, boom. That is where we're at. And so knowing that, we have to put standard, we have to put a, a plan in for it. And our board is, um, they are now into about a hundred percent schematic design, similar construction, drawings inspired. We are now designing and gonna build a new aquatic facility, one aquatic facility which helps in reducing staff costs in two different facilities, operation costs by having one facility together. So this is the new aquatic facility off of the south side of the Cannon Recreation Center. This is to replace, well, the fifty-year-old building that's not gonna be functioning for much longer. This is it. This is this new aquatic expansion that we're talking about. I'll go through a couple renderings so you guys can see. And then ultimately, in two actual designs, this building will look like. Aesthetically, it's gonna match the rest of the park. It's gonna look beautiful, it's gonna be functional, it's gonna be energy efficient. You can see on, on the right side, that's the new building, um, and you can imagine the ponds right in front of that as well, and then the existing building as well. So that's the field house, or that's the aquatic facility. That is currently a deep lane, like pool, seven thousand square foot facility that has a deep end, everything from swim teams to masters to aerobics to a rope swing, a diving board, everything for all ages to be able to be in that pool and really kind of keep that program, keep those high school, state championship, girls' swim team, all. We wanna keep supporting all those different programs that we have in the pool. So then jumping into the other big facility, we heard loud and clear, we're in the mountains, it's tough, winters are tough. We have four user groups, adults and everyone that needs indoor space. We run out of muddy fields when it starts snowing, it starts raining, so being able to provide a multipurpose facility, a gym field house with lots of different multipurpose activities, everything from pickleball to tennis to, uh, court spilling, volleyball, basketball, you name it, being able to have this space for all ages, including a walking track, or highly heated with, it's not safe, it's icy outside, I wanna, I wanna be able to walk in a safe place. So all this being able to provide is in a, in a gym field house, um, just in the north of, north of the park. Um, I'll go back, just so you guys can see proximity. So the field house, so the aquatic facility is down to the right here, that's that yellow one off the side of the building. The field, the gym field house is all the way up to the north up there. If you're familiar with the old, um, habitat location and then the whole afterthoughts of that, we are gonna be converting that, that building into a brand-new, remodeled bathroom facility for the whole park. Water bath, more repotting. It's a big deal for me, I'm excited about that, I'm sorry, bathrooms giving off, I'm excited. But so that's the facility, that's the entrance into, I'm sorry, warming you up. Uh, so that's where the field house is located, that yellow, in the north part of the park. So an multipurpose field, so we've got turf, floor, wood floors, different multi-sport floorings that accommodate all sorts of different uses inside that facility. This is that bathroom facility I was excited about. Uh, and I'm so excited, ten bathrooms. Then the other big one is an all-new inclusive park. We have an amazing inspired, uh, group here, hundreds of kids with all sorts of different types of, uh, abilities and disabilities and being able to bring them all together in one play area is just gonna be a change in you. Porter play surface so the wheel, wheelchairs can actually function at the playground, having wheelchair swings that kids and wheelchairs can all be playing in the same play, the same playground. So this is where this is going, uh, we've got slides, the swings, the, um, interactive mountain features, really sticking to our mission of that mountain character. Then the next amenity, and I'll show you again on the main map, but a, a new skate park. We have an aging skate park at Wolf that, that is just running, it's run its course, it's got cracks, it's really fallen apart, it's just not a new skate park. We have a huge community that's really been, um, a coalition that's really come to the table to really support for those kids that are not a square athlete, a kid that's not in that, uh, that team sport, somebody that can just go out and skate on their own and be able to have that safe space within a, you know, park, I guess. So the skate park, uh, in addition to the park. And then the big other piece, we all have hopefully been to a concert, a activity, an event in the park. Uh, so this is the, the new performance pavilion that's gonna go in the park, permanent functional pavilion that will accommodate small to big to Shakespeare in the park, to, you know, orchestras in the park, really up our game in how we experience and how we enjoy this park from, from the artists, from the music to the creatives come on here at the park. So I'll go back one more time, just to show overall. So the, where you guys are familiar with where the stage is usually at, you can see that performance pavilion that we have right there, really still going back out to that mood, that feel that you can't steal and green space feel and enjoy with the concerts and the, uh, artists and the C I D, all those different booths that are for many of those different events. So, um, you can see the playground space as well next to the garden, in addition to a game space as well. We'll have pachy, we'll have cornhole, we'll have ladder golf, we'll have so many different things you can come to the park and participate in those family activities. Uh, so just really trying to encompass a lot in a park that really will enhance this park, uh, including infrastructure, I know that's something from our parking, infrastructure, some of the water, sewer sanitation. Well, thank you, that was my time. I'm back with Corey. Our board is around, please engage with us. We love the feedback, we love hearing what you guys have to say so we can keep, uh, proceeding and keep doing the best we can about listening to this amazing hearing. I'm very humbled to be a part of it, get to enjoy it every single day. Hope it will be your life.
Thank you, Corey. I don't know about everybody else, but I'm probably looking forward to the least expensive part of that, that rope swing. I'm in. Our third speaker of the evening is Jason Staski. And Jason is the General Manager of Evergreen Metropolitan District. He manages all operations, employees, and the facilities. Prior to joining EMD in twenty twenty-two, he worked in the field of public works, engineering and construction. Jason has a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering in the University of Colorado and is a licensed professional engineer in both Colorado and Louisiana. He is active with many professional organizations and when not at work, Jason enjoys spending time with his wife Laura and two boys. He coaches football at Evergreen High School. Loves hiking, skiing, camping, and other... Loves hiking, skiing, camping and other outdoor activities. Let's just welcome Jason with his presentation on Evergreen Metropolitan District. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. I just wanted to give a couple of project updates, a little bit of an introduction about the metro district. So metro district actually, actually isn't just the Evergreen Metropolitan District, it's three separate districts. Used to be nine. So there's the Evergreen Metropolitan District, the West Jefferson County Metropolitan District, Kittredge Sanitation and Water District. The boundary is really Evergreen Metro stops at Hilltop and then becomes the West Jefferson County Metropolitan District and Kittredge Sanitation and Water District is in the Kittredge area, north and south side of Seventy-Four. Evergreen Metro is a water and wastewater service provider. Kittredge and West Jefferson are wastewater service providers and they give water through intergovernmental agreements with the Evergreen Metropolitan District. So the Evergreen Metropolitan District, twenty-nine staff that manages three special districts, three wastewater plants and water, houses, water mains, sewer mains, tanks, lift stations, pump stations, et cetera. So while Chief Ouija got to talk about putting out fires and saving lives, or you got to talk about skate parks and fun stuff, I'm going to talk about poop and water. Brace yourself, started my day in poop, the lift station. Picking up poop. So I'm going to talk about three projects. He's got three major projects that our board has approved. All three of these are with the Evergreen Metropolitan District specifically. West Jefferson County Metropolitan District is working on one of them that's very similar and that's the biosolids deep watering project. After that, I want to chat a little bit about hydraulic model that we did for firemen. So biosolids, de-watering, it is exactly as disgusting as the salads. What we do with biosolids right now is it goes into a six-thousand gallon tanker truck and that tanker truck has to then haul in several miles, almost a hundred miles to the eastern plains. That is a contract that we have with a company who does that hauling for us. Biosolids are a byproduct of wastewater treatment. It's the stuff that is the solids after we treat the water. The water goes back into the creek, biosolids gets hauled away. So biosolids, de-watering, literally squeezes that digested solids from the wastewater treatment process and removes a lot of the water. By doing that, we can then have what's called de-watered cake. I'm going to eat it, but it's de-watered cake. That de-watered cake goes into a thirty-yard dumpster and then eventually it will be hauled off very similarly as the liquid biosolids. The Evergreen plant right now is, has a contractor on board. Construction is going to start any day now. We are waiting on a permit. So that plant is right by, right on Meadow Drive. This is a two-and-a-half million dollar project, project. Should start any day to get, like I said, and it's going to include a new building and a hydraulic fan press and a bunch of piping. So you may notice a new building in the vicinity, but other than that, the only thing you'll notice is less congestion and less traffic with tanker trucks than the neighborhood. For the West Jeff project, we're looking around two million dollars. We haven't gotten final design on it yet. We just started working on the process. And again, these projects have a good return. So not only are we looking at getting some money back by significantly reducing the amount of trucks that are going to be on the road, but also you can see that bottom line, combined estimated reduction of about a hundred metric tons of CO2 emissions into the atmosphere as well as diesel. So these trucks are huge, they do a lot of wire and tear on the roads. This is going to be a great project for us and it will absolutely help save some of the operation costs. So what does it look like? Super excited, it's a square building. So what you have here on the right side, the left building over there is an existing building, we call it the chemical building. The upper floor is just a storage shed. So the fan press, which is on the left side up here, is going to be installed into that building and the conveyor belt is going to take it into a pre-engineered building that's going to be sitting on these stilts into the dumpster. And then we have to have a very large garage door in order to get a truck in there and flap that truck to remove it. So that's the bread and butter of this project. So the majority of it is foundation, lots of awesome foundation, rotary fan presses are around half a million, a little over half a million dollars, and then everything else is piped. The next thing I want to chat about is the dam outlet works project. The dam was built in the nineteen twenties and has been touched a couple of times. The Evergreen Metro District became the Evergreen Metro District in the seventies when we purchased the water system from Public Service Company of Colorado, which was also itself. It was originally built for power generation, recreation. We have a fifty-year agreement with the city and county of Denver who owns the land and the water rights, that we leased the water rights, the storage rights to Evergreen Lake. It used to be an agreement that included the Evergreen Park and Recreation District and then just two years ago, I think, it was split into two separate agreements. So we're responsible for the dam. That dam has some issues. The main issue that it has is that there, the outlet works doesn't work. So water flows over the dam and it's beautiful and it looks great. Our water rights obligations require us to measure how much water is going out of the lake. We can't do that as it's currently sits because the outlet works pipe is, pipe is in terrible condition, but the valve and the gate to open and close the outlet works is seized, it's been seized for at least a decade. The state requires that high hazard dams, which this is a high hazard dam, can drain five feet in five days and we can't. So the state is mandating on twofold, one, that we can measure water rights, that water rights are turned, flows into Evergreen, and the second, that we can drain it down five feet in five days in case of a disaster. So this project is about a million dollars and it's to slip line the existing outlet works. It includes new piping and instrumentation inside of the vault. So you may not know it, but if you've walked across the bridge over by the dam, that wooden bridge, you're actually walking on top of the vault. So the vault right now is a corrugated metal lid with about a foot of dirt on top of it. We're going to put a formal lid on it that we can access a little bit easier. And then all of the piping inside of there needs to be pulled out, new piping installed, and then we're going to push a new pipe into the outlet structure and then route around. So right now, I think it's a forty-eight inch, a thirty-eight, thirty-six inch pipe. Once that is completed, water rights flows only, will flow through the outlet structure. So in most instances, water will continue to flow over the dam, over the spillway. However, we do need to have some of that water go through the outlet structure in order to meet our water rights and obligations. This project will be out to bid next week. The last major project I want to chat about is the water treatment facility. So the water treatment plant project, this, this plant's been touched a couple of times as well. There was in nineteen ninety-four, an expansion of the water treatment plant. Twenty, two thousand and two, we added membranes to the water treatment facility to get better water quality. And then more recently in twenty twenty-two, we added the high-service pump station to deliver that water more efficiently. The next step of this project is really to address three issues. The first is the combined filter effluent. The second is the operations building and then the third is the chemical feed system. So what are those three things? Right now, I'm going to talk about the ops building because I think that's one everybody's most excited about. The operations building for us is the first building that you see if you're going down Seventy-Four, it's the one with the rock wall on it. Right now, that building has six staff that work inside of it and it's an old sand filter and it looks exactly like an old sand filter. So these guys have been working in this building and there isn't really formal workspace for them. Additionally, in the basement is a bunch of abandoned pipes that are doing absolutely nothing. So why they care about this isn't necessarily that they're going to have a formalized workspace, but because we're adding a second bathroom. So the bathroom that is there right now is very old and small and not ideal for six people that have to share it, five men and one female. So we're going to add another bathroom so it's a little more convenient for everybody. We're going to convert the space upstairs or downstairs. We're going to get all the piping out of there. We're going to get all of the sand out of the old unused sand filters. We're going to turn it into storage. They have storage where, we currently have it upstairs, it's super cluttered. Been there, I'm sure you understand. We're going to take it all in and create a nice workspace upstairs for the staff. The chem building is the building right next to the garden. The chemical feed system there is very old and it needs to be upgraded as well. So what we're doing in that side of this, of the project is just reorganizing and working on containment more than anything. So can redesigning the layout of how we store chemicals at the chem building and then building ways to make sure that it's all contained. The last aspect of the project is the combined filtered effluent. So a couple of years ago, the state came by and did a sanitary survey on us, happens pretty frequently. And one of the things that they identified was the way that we were testing for turbidity in the water was incorrect. It had been that way for many, many years, but apparently it was incorrect for that entire time. When we found that out, they worked with us to create an administrative process and make it so it would work with some temporary piping that was addressed, but we really need to create a formal solution for it. So what we're doing with this is the pipe on the right, that valve is going to be turned, that, it shouldn't really be that way anyway, shouldn't have valves that way. It leaks all the time. So we're going to re-pipe the entire basement of the membrane building and then there's a lot of instrumentation along the wall there and we're just going to update that. So we have a proper way of testing turbidity. So those are the three projects. Last thing I really want to chat about was the hydraulic model. So starting last year, we engaged with our engineering consulting firm to do a full system hydraulic model, something that we've never done before, with the intent of determining fire flow. We wanted to see how well is our, are we meeting fire flow goals that Chief Ouija and the fire district had told us that that's what they need. Anytime someone needs to build in Evergreen, it becomes an issue because they don't have adequate fire flow or there's issues with tank sizes, et cetera. We didn't have a very good understanding of what those problems were. So we engaged with the consulting firm, we looked at it and ultimately what we came up with was that there were upgrades that need to happen. We recognized that we don't have adequate fire flow within certain areas. However, because of the, the way that the modeling was done, we really need to take more field measurements. So where we're at with the hydraulic model is just that. We are going to spend the next year going into neighborhoods and testing pressures and flow rates and fire hydrants and really get it defined very well where we have issues with fire flow and then work with Chief Ouija and the staff at Evergreen Fire to come up with a five-year capital improvement plan to address those issues and try to really make sure that everybody has adequate fire flow within the area. It's not going to happen in five years. I guarantee that our replacing pipes isn't cheap, it's very expensive, but we are going to do everything we can and prioritize areas and try to address it as best as we can. With that, thank you.
Wow, with all that, I'm not quite sure where you'd find the time to coach football on top of it. We're now going to move on to our next segment, portion of today's agenda. And I have the absolute pleasure of introducing our moderator for the Q and A section of this evening. We'd like to welcome back Evergreen Zoom Alan Janey, who did an amazing job at our first town hall facilitating questions to our panelists and from the community at large. Alan Janey is a veteran journalist currently working as a reporter for CBS News Colorado in Denver. He transitioned to a full-time reporting role in 2020 after serving as a morning and noon news anchor for the station for ten years. Alan will again host the panel discussion for us and bring questions that you have submitted online to have the panelists respond and provide their thoughts. With that, let's please welcome up Alan Janey.
Well, this is, this is great to have an in-person discussion over issues, which is a lot more pleasant than trying to supervise a social media discussion in which there'd be an Allah brawl. So glad to be able to do it. I thank all three of these guys who assist us in carrying out that Act of For All or the Act of For All board, which is the nonprofit that's attached to the record district in carrying, bringing around from every year. And I couldn't do it without the metro district, without the fire department, the guys who jump in the water and help people out, the metro district allowing us to be in the water and of course the record district too. So all of us at Act of For All are very appreciative of that and thank you all very much. So we'll try to pose any questions or too difficult, too many of you. Just one note about this tonight, a little bit of a ground rule, that we're not going to have any discussion about the shooting at Evergreen High School because we really just don't have people who are experts on that here. And so it's really fair to have a discussion on that without the folks here who would be able to address those questions. I do want to observe though, the fantastic work of the fire department carrying all of that fantastic work. You went to Wolf Rec Center, what happened there, the decent good people at Wolf Rec Center. I'm going to dump on it, it would be a crystal shooting again. I fear that I might, in my work, I'm really wary of saying that much. So what I'd love to hear is your questions and we'll try to honor these questions. Another rule I might say, and this comes out of the social media if you don't mind, if you disagree, just say I disagree or I have a complaint like that or something, but no diminishing remarks or attacks on people, that'll draw the line on. This isn't social media, which is doing us a heck of a lot of good, by the way. So disagree and let's disagree together if we have a disagreement point to make. So who has a question? Let's, let's fire it up if you have any thoughts of anything you'd like to add from any of our members.
First of all, thank you so much for doing this. Second, my question is not in any of your specialties. So you can tell me, you know, come to another town hall and ask that, but my three issues, and I'm only going to talk about one, is they all start with the letter P. Planning and zoning failures in Evergreen, there's been a few. The expense of permits, which means a lot of people are not doing permit work. But my number one thing is the parking lot downtown. And the fact that two businesses are closing because of that, Evergreen Crafters and Creekside. I'm a little concerned, we already have one board that's outbuilding downtown and I just, I might know where to go with that. It's none of your expertise and again, you can tell me, good question, come to our next town hall. Like I'm good with however you want to do that.
And that may be, that may be a point there, there isn't anybody from Megan has knowledge of that. I can tell you that I have had discussions with, with Megan and others who are affected by parking and I've talked with PRRS, which is the company that's hired a contractor to, to do the enforcement on, there's lots of work in the story about that. Put it off around, because it came around the time of the school shooting that I began to work on it and everything's kind of taken a backseat because of that. Megan?
Yeah, so thanks for coming out. As you know, I am the president of the Evergreen Downtown Business Association. I've been trying to defend you all with your big ninety-two I've been trying to defend you all with your big $92 ticket, so I apologize for that. But that doesn't come from the Evergreen businesses, that is from the landowners. And I also agree that that fee is ridiculous, but it's being, basically you have a time limit, and if you go over, you can validate it again. So that's the point I really want to make, is there is free parking. You have to go into the shops, and I know that they've been super strict with being over, or whatever the complications are, maybe you had your QR code, but you can always reach out to us and we can submit it for them to take it off. And I've been pretty successful when people do that with me. But I really want to let you know that they will extend it once you download the app, or even if you just go online, once their three hours is up, probably do it before that, but you will get additional free time. And the parking lot across the street from Cactus Jack's uses a QR code, so you can use any of the businesses in the building there, the Evergreen Mount Market, I believe, and then at Cactus Jack's. And then the parking lot across the street from the Little Bear is most of the businesses that surround that parking lot. And they'll have their own individual codes that have been asked not to share publicly, but if you call up the shop or go into any of them, and you don't even spend any money, even though we'd love you to do that, we're just trying to keep out the people that are going to the lake and not spending money in their downtown. So I see we have a question, so.
Yeah, where does that revenue go?
Well, like, it goes to the PRRS, so.
Yeah, the owners of those lots get the fees. The violation money goes to the PRRS, Department of Enforcement, that's their profit. Because it costs, according to them, about $50,000 to outfit the cameras and the systems that operate parking systems. So they have, they get the money from the violations, but when you pay to park, the amount you pay goes to the owner of the lot.
What does Evergreen get?
Does Evergreen get, well, it's a, I don't want to, you know, take a side, but what I've learned in looking into this is, these are privately owned lots, and they're gaining revenue from, the owners of the lots are gaining revenue from. And they're, you know, they're private entities, it's their property. I suppose they have a right to earn money from that. It is a transition to paid parking in Evergreen, where we're all used to kind of parking for free. I spent away a lot.
And I know they have to pay for this.
They're property owners, and I suppose there is a right, you stand a little bit of a right, if you're on my property, you have, you're going to park in the car.
I mean, it was not even one, whatever, six months ago. So did they just buy the land, or what has changed? I just assumed that.
The owner of that, yeah, the owner of that building told me, they give, this is what he said, he wants only people who visit, the tenants of the building where he is renting space, parking in that lot, and believes that, that he wants to make sure that people who are going to other places are not parking in that lot, that the parking is only devoted to the people who rent from him in that building. Yes? What's that? Okay, yeah, please.
If this works. So a lot's happened in Jefferson County over the last 18 months. They got some pretty significant grant money to be able to revisit everything from transportation to planning and zoning, the different code sets, and very important to us is the International Wildland Urban Interface Code, which is relative to construction and mitigation in wildland area. So they're working through that process in the Together Jeff Code program, and there's a lot of changes coming. We've been very much involved, especially with the Wildland Urban Interface Code, the governor mandated that every county in Colorado has to adopt the code now. That was only a year ago, and then every county has to have something in place by July of 2026. Jefferson County was ahead of that, working with the fire districts. We had sections of the Wildland Urban Interface Code already in, and they're going to work on other parts of it, which access is one. Access has to do with, and fire apparatus get in there while people are trying to get out, and water supply. So there's a lot going on. I encourage you to go to Jefferson County's website and look up Together Jeff Code, and you'll see a lot of work happening around, not only planning and zoning, but a lot of the other ones happening.
And Chief, those codes are likely, and I've done stories about this too, over the long haul, they're only going to get more and more stringent because they're trying to observe those new codes, and that's a tough code. We're looking down the road that when you build something in the future, it's only going to get tougher and tougher because of the realities of fire danger, correct?
Correct, and land use is a big part of that, and the codes, it's, things that are being built now are more likely to survive a wildfire than things that were built 50 years ago, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, even 10 years ago. So there's a lot happening there. Some people aren't going to like that because those codes can be very restrictive, but one thing we've recognized, and we've known for a long time, the counties are recognizing it now, is the Wildland Urban Interface, the zones, the Marshall Fire opened up a lot of people's eyes. The Waldo Canyon Fire, really, all of those burned right down into the city. They burned right out where people didn't expect big wildfires to happen. They expect them up here, not down in the grasslands around Boulder. So you're going to see the Wildland Urban Interface zones extend much farther out than west of C-470 and 93. That's a big change that's coming, and it'll be approved within the next six months.
You know, and I'm sure you have questions about insurance, and maybe we could talk a little bit about that because we do know that insurance companies are taking a look at the SIP code, and they're saying, we want to reduce our exposure here, and so people are losing their insurance. There is very little way to control that, isn't there?
Yeah, it's a very difficult thing, and that's what insurance companies were doing, was for some insurance companies, they look at the entire front range of Colorado and say it's a 10, and that's the worst rating for it. A new law was passed, and it should, I think it gets implemented at the first of the year, which doesn't allow them to do that anymore. They have to look at, not an entire neighborhood, but they have to look at individual homes and what work you've done to mitigate, and take that into account. They have to be transparent far more than they have been, why they turn people down, or why they're selling their insurance away from people. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. That was a big step forward. It should help people try and maintain their insurance, but it's also, it gets back to mitigation. Work has to be done for you to get credit for taking the steps to try and save your home if something should happen.
Okay, let's go to questions. I'm going to pick you right here, you're close, and I'm going to get you guys. Go for it.
You park on Hotwood, but my understanding is, our Hotwood, for example, Evergreen, is just, I live around this one, say, her, her, and you pay on the, on the eight block. What you're talking about is, if that one just called back, it was five to one, it's not like the lot that was, those lots, the lot, the, the, the.
They're making revenue. Yeah, this is, you know, this is another point about parking, that the parking lot operators are making revenue on that property. I mean, you probably remember the days when you'd go tell the person in the booth, the one in front of the booth, just be a couple of, oh, okay. But now they have the Department of Enforcement, I don't really get much credit.
Okay, you have a question. One is, the fire department, parking rent are tax-supported things. In other words, they show up on our act. EMD shows up, but there's, it's a user's, as I understand it, it's people who are on the water that pay for that. Part of my question is, I just beyond that, when you're doing things with the fire department, how are you, and we, we, so we as non-payers to the Evergreen Metro District, maybe we don't benefit, maybe we do benefit, but are the users going to pay for that? I mean, are the people who are on the water, on the EMD system, going to pay for all the improvements? And therefore, are there going to be, I mean, this is a curiosity question.
So for the most part, you're correct. Evergreen Metro District and the West Jefferson County Metropolitan District, while they are taxing authorities, they do not have a mill levy on any of the properties, so it's their revenue, it's 100% based, 100% based off of service charges. So there's a base rate for water, and a base rate for sewer, and then a consumption charge for water. Kittredge still has a mill levy, just because Kittredge is so much smaller, they rely on, still have taxing the folks who live in Kittredge, collecting a tax revenue. So your question really, I think, is about fire flow and the benefit that people outside of the district may get as a result of improving the fire flow. I think it's a fair one, but I guess my opinion is, if your neighbor didn't have watering waste water service with us, and you did, and their house caught on fire, your house is still at risk. So you would want that water to be available to put that house out. We have an IGA with, or an intergovernmental agreement with Evergreen Fire Department, Jefferson County, to provide raw water in the event of a wildfire. So we just look at it as being a good neighbor and recognizing that wildfire spreads is not addressed. Does that answer your question?
So in the process, what I'm really looking at, trying to, I mean, how your organization, your company is finding, you have R, your D, taxes, yours, is a, the users, you said, that's a, that was a, one thing to get in a way that was missing out of the presentation with the partners, was the cost. People don't know, but we didn't, we really didn't know, so when you talk about Station Two, Station One, we're talking about billions and millions of dollars. You, where we talk about all the wonderful clinics around there, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars. Right now, it's my understanding, either one of you have a lot of money, or that's what you're the taxpayers, and we can ask you to ask.
Go ahead and address it. Cory, go ahead, please.
Sure, thanks, Bob. So we're very proud, we have a bond extension that we have no plan to go for future tax. You guys allowed that bond and extension, which we are creatively using those funds to actually fund all these projects. Part of everything I showed is about $19 million. Of that, we've already received over a million and a half in grants, in addition to donors and to, in creative funding sources, we are also doing a lot of the work in-house. The best example I can say is, we're crews are doing a lot of work themselves. The bridge over in Buchanan that you guys saw, we had to go over almost $100,000, and our parks crew did that for less than $25,000. So we're trying to spread every dollar that we have, and be as fiscally responsible we can, because then we can do more with it. And so to your question, is we are not going to go ask the community for any more tax audit. We are going to utilize, when you guys a few years ago voted 73% in favor of them, we're going to utilize that every penny and do everything we say up here. But we'll take time, and we're going to do it incrementally, but that is our strategic plan, and that is our direction as we start to go forward.
And I'll remember that, too. Right, Chief, you go ahead.
And with our, with our Station Two project, we do have the money, so that we're covering with what we have in our reserves. There'll be some of that reserves left over for Station One, but we do have to find a funding mechanism for Station One. And we actually paid off a bond that billed all those stations I talked about in 2002. After 20 years of paying on that, we paid that off and gave a mill back to the public. So our mill went down on your taxes by paying that off, and your taxes went down from us as a result of that.
Any need for it, Bob, to say this?
No, Bob, you and I can wait back.
All right, I'm going to move on to it. There was a, I think I had some up here, it was up early, you were up early, right? I'm going to go, I'm going to go there, we're going to get into you with the microphone if you don't mind, try to keep it kind of close when addressing.
Is there a higher mitigation plan for the pine beetle out there, or having?
Good question. They're back a little bit, right?
They're back in a big way, and it's, that's a great question, and we've been watching it closely. It was just, I'm part of the Jefferson County Fire Commission as well, and we were discussing it today at the Fire Commission meeting. So something you may not be aware of, Jefferson County, when they passed the 108 ballot question, that, a majority of that was for wildfire prevention, and for them to build out more of wildfire response and prevention, they're actually hiring 37 people to just around wildfire, which is huge for, especially us in the mountains and the unincorporated areas. We need their help, and we partnered with them, we partnered with Clear Creek to try and find grant money to tackle this, and that was a conversation this morning, is grant money that's been applied for can be utilized to try and help with the pine beetle, to try and take out some of those trees. Something that people need to understand is that the most dangerous tree is one that's got pine needles on it, or has dead pine needles on it. When those needles drop, that tree becomes, it's still fueled, but it's not as bad as if it was full of pine needles. That's when we get the crown fires and the running crown fires. So a standing dead tree is not as hazardous as a live tree or one with dead, all the, all the orange. So they still need to be taken out, and we're working on it. We're, actually, the county does flyovers so we can see where the pine beetle is moving to, and what areas it's going to affect, so we can help prepare more and try and find funding to take care of that.
Okay, so we're, we're, let's try up there, right for about. Okay, go ahead.
Well, let's have to do about fire mitigation. I live near Phileas Park, there's a bunch of sledge piles from when they did the mitigation, and some of them are right under trees. Is the fire department going to be the ones that are burning those sledge piles this winter? And are they going to, like, have a watch overnight to make sure it doesn't spread to our homes, which are not that far away from the park?
Yeah, that's a part, that's a, curing is a part of that, right? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct. Those piles need to cure, so they need to dry out, so they'll burn effectively, and burn to complete ash. And then they are burned in the winter when there's snow around them, there's very stringent requirements that need to be met for those piles to be lit off, and burn plans need to be in place. The fire department's usually involved with that. We're not responsible for those piles. Those piles are either Jefferson County Open Space or Dehramon Parks, most of them are Dehramon Parks, but we'll work with them when they're ready to burn. There's a bunch on 103 as well, great mitigation work up there. Now, the piles are left, and once those cure, will help Dehramon Parks or Jefferson County Open Space or any agency if they ask us to help, come out and help take care of those.
Somebody there overnight, too, because I remember what happened in Conover, when that baby died, when he had a burn, it wasn't supervised overnight, it was about 10 or 15 years ago, who were it? The neighbor who were it?
Yeah, that was a very different situation. It was a prescribed fire, so they were burning a very large area, not just a pile, or several piles. So again, this will happen in the winter when there's snow on the ground. If there's not snow on the ground, they won't do it, so that helps eliminate the spread quite a bit. And they are monitored, someone needs to be there. And the Forest Service does, and a lot of times they let them go in the deep snow, and they don't monitor them because they, they know it's safe for those to go with snow surrounding them.
I can tell you, the amount of red tape has risen dramatically and associated with burns, like a 60 or 70 page document. Okay, let's go. I've been not being here over on this side. Can we go all the way to the back? All the way over here. Yeah, and Evergreen Fire now has a burn boss, you're getting one, right? And that's, that's a person who is qualified to conduct these burns, right?
Yeah, there's different levels of prescribed fire or burn certifications, and we do have people who are working on those. Jefferson County, their fire management officer is a very, very qualified person, and he's allowing us to work with him, and he can sign off on our taskbooks to help us with that. He's also going to help supervise some of these pile burns and work with us.
All right, here, here we go. Try to speak up good and loud, where's?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think we're all concerned about the evacuation scenarios and preventing a air disaster situation. And I want to know if the, if Evergreen- And I want to know if the, if Evergreen Fire Rescue is involved with discussing this when they're developing new subdivisions and housing units. I live in the Joaquin neighborhood, and they're building like 75 new structures in a small area. And it's just really scary, and I want to see, you know, how that process works in terms of working with the county to potentially prevent some of those type of developments.
Now, it's a great question. Evacuation is a big concern, and Evergreen Fire is definitely involved in conversations from housing development projects to, we have a fuels crew that all summer long is working on projects, and some of the projects, they do our evacuation routes. They just did a great big project up on High Drive this summer, cutting trees back and thinning trees from the roadside. We have an agreement with both Clear Creek County and Jefferson County to be able to work in those right-of-ways to create a 15 or 30-foot shaded fuel break along those roadways. We did one between Buffalo Park and Burke Forest, so Cliff Drive, Hatch Drive, all the way over to Combine. That one required a lot of work because we had to go door to door knocking on people's doors and asking permission to work on, and believe it or not, we had about 30% participate on that whole stretch. So people like those trees blocking the traffic noise, blocking their homes. So we, we're doing what we can, and the county's well aware of it. Clear Creek County's working on roadside mitigation as well. Elk Creek Fire's doing a great job over there with, with their program. So a lot of the fire districts are, are really Elk Creek kind of led with that, but are following the, following that path and working on roadside mitigation. Our next project's going to be in Soda Creek, so our, our Community Wildfire Protection Plan identifies hazardous evacuation routes, and we've been trying to concentrate on those, and each summer try and get one or two of them done. We're, we're cutting those trees back and working on, working on making it safer to evacuate.
And then the neighborhood groups, in Euphorium, you have the neighborhood captains. That, that's a big element of that, right?
Correct. Our ambassador program, Jess Moore and Sarah Ben Turner work with that, and we have 26 plan units. I think we have 25 ambassadors right now in all but one plan unit that are working with their neighbors, working with their community to mitigate their own properties, and they can take that right down to the road. So there's some great work happening all around the district.
Okay, I think you've got a question, right? Go for it.
I believe this will be our last one of the evenings, we're already over time here. First, I apologize because life is not as important as many of the things that they're discussing.
Take your microphone for me, nice and close to, yeah, there you go.
This is to EPRD. Tennis is a sport that is enjoyed by all ages in our community. In the survey, it was done just a few years ago, there was a great deal of support for indoor courts in our community. Outdoor tennis courts in Marshdale were converted to pickleball courts. No additional tennis courts were made available. Pickleball got indoor space at Wolf for their recreational pleasure. Tennis did not. That has left our Evergreen community with only four public outdoor courts located at Wolf. Indoor courts had a 27% positive response on that survey. The board has indicated that the Evergreen tennis population is not well represented. I would argue that the 27% survey response for indoor courts demonstrated the tennis community's interest and representation. How much money was spent on a survey whose responses you've ignored? An existing skateboard, skateboard park is available. It may need updating on the Wolf property, and still we're talking $800,000 to build a new one? Once again, ignoring the community response to the survey when skateboard parks were at the bottom, 7% of the respondents. So my last question is, what have you done for Evergreen Tennis in the 30 years that I've lived here?
Well, thank you for your feedback. I really appreciate it. I think it, it, you know, it really needs to be said that that survey, as I mentioned in my presentation, that is one piece of hundreds of touchpoints from kids that are unrepresented, that don't have the voice, that are in school, and the kids that, that need those kind of safe spaces. We all know that. It's front and center in our community, and these kids need those safe spaces to be able to be healthy and active. So I just want to make note that, you know, the board and all the staff during this strategic plan, that you're bringing up the survey, and I appreciate that, that is one piece of very valuable information, but it is also part of many, many different ones. We appreciate all user groups, and, and I, and I take pride in the staff of listening to all of those user groups, no matter in a smaller county, but we do our best to accommodate uses for every single one of those. As my presentation presented, we're very excited. Board has given very clear direction to build a multipurpose facility that will accommodate tennis, and that is fantastic. We're very excited about that. But we also want to be good neighbors. We want to support other businesses. Club 45 is a new business, and we are working with them collaboratively on how to, how to do joint tournaments, how to have more tennis, how to do more feeders, and, and that's fantastic. So we want to support that tennis bubble. If you're not familiar with Club 45, that's the new tennis bubble, and so we're supporting them in their operations, too. We also don't want to have all new facility to compete with businesses in this community, but we want to support them. So annually, we spend thousands of dollars on resurfacing all of our courts, including the outdoor court, the courts at Wolf as well. So we take a lot of pride in all of those facilities, but I appreciate your comments and your feedback, and that, that has been a great direction to actually build that newer facility in time and as resources are available, because it will take us years to get all these things together. But we are starting construction, and once, first of the year, once that construction period starts, it will, it will be, we're actually going to start doing quite a few of those construction projects in New Cannon, so we appreciate those comments.
And I'll have the board members raise your hands again, so you can button hold the board members, too, if you, if you want on that. Yeah, I'm afraid we are now beyond our timeframe, but I thank you, Jason Stauskas, Cory Van Lee, Mike Weedy. Thank you all very much.